In the absence of having a chair and vice chair, can I suggest as a council member that we all please recite the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Madam Clerk, before you call the roll, I think it's important that a statement be made with regard to the appropriateness and quite candidly, the legality of tonight's meeting. For starters, based on the public notice for this meeting, stated purpose for the meeting is in contravention and in violation of the Charter. There is no legal authority under the Charter to hold a vote on council leadership at any time other than the first meeting of the council in the calendar year. Article 2, Section 2.050 is specific, unequivocal, and controlling. For 2021, that meeting took place on January 5th, 2021. In addition, there is no legal authority for the stated and expressed purpose of today's meeting. The council has no legal authority to conduct the intended vote for leadership. To do so is in clear violation of the Charter. Accordingly, any vote by any member of the council on any such initiative would in fact be illegal. The only proper action is for each member to refuse to vote by abstaining. In addition, as concerned who rightly presides over today's meeting, the vote or attempted vote for a presiding officer at the January 12th, 2021 meeting of the council never took place. Moreover, any such vote was unnecessary and illegal as Chairwoman Clancy was present at that meeting, as she is today. So in any case, a presiding officer was selected at the January 12th meeting. Councilwoman Fitch has no legal basis to preside over today's meeting because the chairman, the duly elected chairman, is present. It is clear that the disagreement and division within this council cannot and will not be resolved or reconciled by this council. As such, it seems equally clear that the only way to address and finally resolve the issue is to seek judicial interpretation of Sections 2.040 and 11.060 of the Charter as applicable to the January 5th, 2021 vote. In doing so, the concerns and issues will be resolved and this body will be able to get about the business of governing. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
I've already asked for the roll call. Please call.
Councilman Fitch, you're out of order.
We can go ahead and call the roll. Councilman Fitch, I will recognize you to speak if there's something you'd like to say.
Thanks for that. Let's have the roll.
Councilmember Days, I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Yeah.
Councilmember Days.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Here.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Trakus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Please proceed.
Communications.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Moving on to other communications, item number one.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
If I could interject here for a moment, we did pass Resolution Number 5 last week. And Councilman Trakus is correct, we did not elect a presiding officer at that moment. However, I appreciate your legal advice, Councilman Trakus, but you are not our legal counsel. So thank you for your comments. I appreciate that. Councilwoman Days, did you have a motion?
I did. The resolution passed on January 12th, vacated both the chair and the vice chair. And with that in mind, I nominate Tim Fitch as presiding officer.
Madam Clerk, please read the item on the agenda before we go ahead and take, move forward with the motion.
Item number three on the agenda is the completion of Section 1 of Resolution Number 5, adopted on January 12th, 2021, for the electing a chair and vice chair of the county council for 2021.
You know, I have a point of order for the members. The point of order is, is when there's no chair and no vice chair, the very first order of business per the Charter is the election of a presiding officer. So that's what we have to do before we can get to item number three. So, Councilwoman Day.
That was what I did.
I object to the motion. Object to the motion. The chair is clearly present. The motion and any vote is out of order.
I believe that the resolution, as I presented earlier on January 12th, was voted on. It was passed and it vacated the chair and the vice chair. I repeat the motion. I nominate Tim Fitch as presiding officer.
I also have a point of order. I have a point of order. Presiding officer is not on the agenda.
It doesn't need to be. It's in the Charter.
Councilwoman Dunaway, go ahead.
Vice chair, that you had elections for presiding officer.
My discussion is a couple of things. Number one, the resolution that was passed on the 12th was a non-binding resolution. And there is a right way to handle this and a wrong way to handle it. As you are all well aware, when we saw that the Charter changes caused a conflict in leadership elections, we asked our county counselor, who actually is our lawyer, how we needed to proceed. We got her legal opinion. We followed that legal opinion and elected our leadership per the law. Now here we are. That you are treating adherence to the law as optional is dangerous and concerning, especially at this moment in history. You may not like what the law says. You may even disagree with our lawyer's interpretation, an interpretation that the only two lawyers serving on this council also agree with. And if you wish to initiate a legal proceeding to settle this dispute, please do so. But your response cannot be to simply install your own separate government. You don't get to not follow the law when it doesn't suit your designs or when you disagree with it. That cannot be the standard we set for ourselves or the example we set for our constituents. Especially after last week's events at the Capitol, this is not a time to normalize chaotic transitions of power. This is a time to get to work. As of today, over 1,500 St. Louis County residents have died of COVID-19. Thousands more are out of work. Families are struggling to put food on the tables and their kids through the school day, many of which are still at home while parents are trying to work. Businesses trying to keep their doors open. And a two-dose vaccine needs to be distributed to every willing St. Louis Countyan. And what is this council doing? Holding sham elections, trying to overturn the results of a lawful election that was more than a week ago. On January 5th, we followed the advice our own legal counsel gave us, and we elected Chairwoman Clancy and Vice Chair Trakus to lead us through the rest of this pandemic? The one whose attention we're currently taking valuable county resources away from to fight petty power grabs? Some of my colleagues are saying they don't believe the law is what our council has told us it is. Then my response is that they should ask that legal question in the proper forum, not just say they don't like what the law is and so they're not going to follow it. If my colleagues wish to ask a court to break this impasse, I will accept whatever decision is made, but I will not be bullied into not following the law.
Thank you for your comments. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Point of order, please.
Please call the roll. I called the question.
The question has been called. All of the debate ceases and we go immediately to the roll call.
Councilmember Fitch, who made the second, please?
I did.
I did not. I actually have something I would like to say before we move on for the discussion.
We'll have a discussion.
It's been called.
I did not have an opportunity to provide my statement, Councilman Fitch. I understand at previous meetings, we have agreed that everyone deserves a chance to speak, and I would like to do that. Presiding officer elections is not on the agenda. That is a Sunshine Law violation to proceed in this manner. It must be on the elect, on the agenda. Therefore, I will be abstaining from this because I object, this is illegal per our Charter and per the Missouri Constitution.
Got it. Thank you. Madam Clerk, the chair, Councilman Harder, gave the second.
Okay, thank you. It was Councilman Harder. Okay, so the motion is to nominate or select Councilman Fitch as the presiding officer.
It was to nominate.
Thank you. I am sending out for votes. Did you all receive the vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
I object. This is an unlawful act per the county charter and the Missouri State Constitution, and I will be abstaining from the vote.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Four. Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Abstain.
Councilmember Trakus.
I concur with Councilwoman Dunaway. This vote is illegal and will not be a party to it. I abstain.
Councilmember Harder.
Four. Aye.
On the motion to nominate Tim Fitch as, excuse me, Councilman Fitch as presiding officer, there are four ayes and three abstentions. Councilman Fitch?
Yes.
Councilman Fitch, before we proceed, can I please just say to the council that as the county clerk and my deputy clerk here today, we are obligated to record the proceedings from the meeting. And when everyone is talking over one another, it is very difficult for us to capture what is being said. So I ask that we please try to talk one at a time so that we can capture the important statements you are making.
I agree 100%. Thank you for reminding us of that. So thank you. So I'd like to proceed to the next order of business, which is nominations for council chair for 2021, and I nominate Rida Days as the chair for council chair for 2021.
Point of order, please. Point of order, please.
Let's get the discussion first. Was there a second?
Second.
Yes, I heard a second from Mr. Councilman Harder.
Yes, Councilwoman Clancy.
Yes, I appeal this action again. There is no legal mechanism in our charter or the Missouri Constitution to redo our chair and vice chair votes. I will be abstaining from this action.
I would also like to, if you don't mind, I object. This is an unlawful act per the county charter and the Missouri State Constitution, and I too will abstain.
Any other discussion?
I concur. I concur with my colleagues, Councilwoman Clancy and Councilwoman Dunaway. This action is obscenely illegal. I object to it and I abstain.
Any other discussion? Hearing no further discussion, are there any other nominations for council chair for 2021? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
To nominate, do you want?
Yes, to nominate Councilwoman Days as the chair for 2021.
I think at this point, with one nominee, we can move to the selection.
Correct. That's fine.
Councilmember Days, okay, to the position of council chair.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Let me type that in real quick.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Abstain.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye. Four.
Thank you. Councilmember Clancy.
Abstain.
Councilmember Trakus.
Abstain.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye. Four.
On the motion to select Councilwoman Days as council chair for 2021, there are four ayes and three abstentions.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate that. I wish that this transition had been somewhat smoother, but nonetheless, this is where we are. House is now open for nominations for the vice chair.
Again, I object. Point of order, please. I object to this, to this motion. Again, I, there is no legal mechanism to redo our chair and vice chair votes. So this is an illegal action. I object, and I would like the record to continue to reflect that, as I will continue to object to these actions.
Thank you very much.
I concur in that objection.
As do I.
I make a motion, Madam Chair, to nominate Councilman Mark Harder as vice chair.
Mark Harder has been nominated for vice chair. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Let me type it in here, please.
Madam, Madam Clerk, I would like the record to reflect that I object to this. Again, there is no legal mechanism to redo our chair and vice chair votes. This is illegal per the, per the St. Louis County Charter and the Missouri Constitution.
Thank you very much.
I join in that objection, Madam Clerk.
I think your objections have been heard.
As am I.
I believe the clerk will make a record of that. Please do so, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam Chair, and who made the second on the, now that we are actually selecting Councilman Harder as vice chair? The motion was made by, uh...
I believe it was Councilman Fitch. I seconded.
Okay. Okay. Moved by Councilman Fitch, seconded by, okay. Sorry about that.
Not a problem.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Do you see your votes?
Yes.
Did you see the votes?
In furtherance of my objection to this unlawful act, I will abstain.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Abstain.
Councilmember Trakus.
Abstain.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to select Councilman Harder as vice chair for 2021, there are four ayes and three abstentions.
Thank you very much and congratulations, Councilman Harder. I believe, I will have some words to say subsequently, but not at this particular point. Madam Chair, Clerk, do we have any public forum here? We'll move to that order of business.
Yes, ma'am, we have eight speakers this evening.
Madam Clerk, pardon me, I would like to record an objection to the election of Councilman Mark Harder as the vice chair. Again, I appeal that motion, I appeal that action. It was unlawful per the Missouri Constitution and our St. Louis County Charter.
I join in that objection, Madam Chair, and to Madam Clerk.
Your objections are noted. Thank you.
All right, we can move ahead to public forum. Diane, how many speakers do we have today?
Excuse me?
You are no longer the chair. Rida is the chair.
Let's move on to public forum.
Madam Clerk, how many do we have this evening?
Ma'am, we have eight speakers to speak this afternoon.
All right. Thank you. When your name is announced, please listen for the clerk to ask you to begin speaking and then state your first and last name and zip code for the record. The clerk will inform you when your three minutes are up. The public forum, it's extremely important to us and we want to hear what you have to say. Madam Clerk, please begin.
Please, please call the first speaker, Madam Clerk. And I would like to state also that we really encourage you all to turn your cameras on. We appreciate being able to see you, but we do understand that everyone's technology does not work. So if you aren't able to do that, that's fine, but we would appreciate seeing you. Please proceed.
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker this evening is Nick Cassoff, followed by Kate Stratton.
Okay, my name is Nick Cassoff. Zip code is 63135, and I have no idea why my camera isn't turning on. It's not even the option. Oh, now it is. All right. So I've been watching this spectacle unfold since the 5th of January, and I, I want to start by saying I'm disturbed. Ms. Dunaway talked about a sham election, but the sham election wasn't today. The sham election was on January the 5th, when somebody who was not authorized to vote passed a vote for somebody to be the chair of this council. That was the sham election. That was the unlawful action. And all of the chaos that has proceeded since that time, with Ms. Clancy being frankly, not only rude, but childish, and constantly interrupting after this vote has taken place.
Mr. Cassoff?
As a citizen of...
Mr. Cassoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, but it's a little difficult to hear you. I'm afraid we're not going to be able to pick you up on the transcript.
Um, okay. So, you know what? So as, as a voter in St. Louis County and, and somebody who really follows this stuff, very disturbed at what's going on here. Now, we do have a lot of business to attend to in this county, and the former chair is correct about that. The way we move on with this business is for the three who have been obstructionists and engaging in all this illegality, step back, let the new council do their business, and let this county move forward. I, I, you know, frankly, I don't have a horse in this race. Chairman Days is going to be a great councilman. Ms. Dunaway did a fine job last year, but it's time to move on and cut this shenanigans. Have some respect for the people of this county that pay the taxes and pay your salary. Cut it with these childish objections and let this council move on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Kate Stratton, followed by Cassandra Butler.
Madam Clerk, Kate Stratton has fallen off, so I'm going to move Cassandra.
Butler?
Yeah. And I apologize, I'm having a technical difficulty. I can't seem to move her up. I found her. I'll see if I can just unmute her from here.
Ms. Butler?
Yes. Yes. Can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. I am struck by, um, I'm struck by what happened last week, and obviously, there was a gap in whatever change that was made and it wasn't provided, where this one time, if there would be an extension of the council members' term to, to, to bridge the gap between that and the installation of the new officer. So relying on the county executive's counsel for guidance on that seemed, seemed not the best thing to do. I'm reminded of the challenges that the council had when Stinger's counsel had very many different opinions that the council did not agree with, and the council decided they needed their own counsel. So I wonder why the council is relying on guidance given by the county executive's counselor instead of their own. I know we had a election to allow the council to have their own counsel, so I'm confused what happened to that. So that's it. So, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Our next speaker is Jeff Kramer, followed by Kim Besserman. Mr. Kramer?
Why don't we make sure Mr. Kramer is reached out to and we can get his, his comments for the record?
Chris, did he drop off or is he just not able to hear him?
Yeah, why don't we go ahead?
Excuse me. Excuse me. Chris, did he drop off or we just cannot hear him?
He's, he's there, but we can't hear him or he doesn't have...
Mr. Kramer, we can't, we can't hear you. We will reach out to you and make sure that your comments are submitted for the record. Why don't you go ahead and call the next speaker, Diane? Thank you.
The next speaker is Kim Besserman, followed by Arnie Deanhoff. Mr. Besserman?
Yes, I have no comments.
Oh, you don't want to speak today?
No, I'm just observing. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Uh, next speaker is Arnie Deanhoff.
Good afternoon, members of the county council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanhoff, state and county public advocate. It's very important what I have to say, and I hope that you all take the time to listen to me. Just last Tuesday, January 5th, just five days after I called for county reforms on many fronts in the police department, calling for a new police chief, Justice Services, Department of Corrections, County Services, streamline access to county government. This past Saturday, after being contacted by a first-person police officer upset with Mary Barton's brother-in-law, county police communication specialist, radio dispatcher, Mark Pilliard, using racial derogatory language, which we have all heard now, called the "Pillar" recording. Mark Pilliard stated the "F" followed by dropping the "N" word over a public communications, county public safety radio dispatch system governed by the United States Federal Telecommunications Commission. Hello, Chief Mary Barton. Wake up over there in your plush county police offices of the county police chief. Take your blinders off, Chief Mary Barton. Chief Barton, is this language you talk, is it acceptable to your family and around your table at Thanksgiving and major holidays? Let's speak the truth and the real truth right here, right now, pending investigations. The recording dispatch transmission is released to the community so we can all hear the context and the hate speech. Thank heavens for chapter 6 of the revised state statutes in Missouri, or we would have never heard the content. Conflict of interest, I'm calling. Because of the relationship of dispatcher Mark Pilliard and Chief of Police Mary Barton, I am calling for an investigation by an outside third-party agency, either the Missouri Highway Patrol or the Federal Bureau of Investigations, Civil Rights Division. In addition, I'm requesting and calling for a thorough investigation by the County Ethics Commission or by the County Ethics Committee. Because of Mark Pilliard's racist remark, it is once again, the leadership ability of Chief Mary Barton into question for the entire region. The quote from the January 11th, 21 editorial board of the St. Louis Police Dispatch, Barton must now remove her personal blinders and either act to make St. Louis County a leader in achieving these urgently required reforms, or get out of the way so a more competent and racially sensitive chief can do the job. If you all recall, she did, she made testimony to you, but she said that we don't have a racial inequality problem in St. Louis County. Obviously, her own brother-in-law did make...
Madam Chair, that's three minutes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Deanhoff, please wrap up your statement.
Um, Councilwoman Clancy, when you were the chair, we respected you. We asked for permission to speak. Please allow me the same respect. This vote was four to three. Whether you think it is... Whether you think it is illegal or not, please allow the respect of this chair that has just been elected to perform her duties. I appreciate that. Madam Clerk, please call the next speaker. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stacy Washington, followed by Jason Moore. Ms. Washington?
If your husband wants to talk to us about maybe a joint venture, we'd be...
Ms. Washington, are you there? Okay.
I think she has a conflict with something else going on in the household.
Yes, I would definitely...
Go ahead, yeah.
...mention that to him. When are you in summer coming back to St. Louis? Okay, uh, let's move on to Jason Moore.
Owner of the TPA.
Yes, we can reach out to her. Please move on, Madam Clerk.
We're supposed to all collaborate in St. Louis on this tribal nation program.
Hold on, sorry. Trying to find Mr. Moore.
Is there any way we can mute him or what do you think? Let's move to the next speaker, please.
Yes, ma'am. Um, we're trying to find Mr. Moore, Jason Moore.
Okay, thank you so much for everybody. Uh, to, uh, Councilwoman Webb, welcome to the county council. And hopefully this, this, this initial start to your, to your new tenure has been eventful to say the least, but thank you for being consistent in your message to bring temperance and, uh, lawfulness back to the county council and the county government. I want to wish congratulations to Chair, Chair, uh, Chairwoman, uh, Days. Thank you for stepping up and being a true leader for the county. And to Vice Chair, uh, Harder, thank you as well for, for sticking to, to, uh, to what is right in the county and restoring law and order. The only thing I have to say is now that we've all had all the drama over the past couple of weeks, that we can now settle in at 2021 and reset the direction of St. Louis County as a whole. Rejoin all the districts, all the areas of St. Louis County from North County to South County, mid-county to West County. We're all in this together. We have gone through enough of one man running the whole county through the Department of Health. It is time to restore legislative order and allowing proper lawful decisions to be made on behalf of the people. The government is not there to hold people down, but to listen and to act on the will of the people. For the last almost year, it has been opposite of that. Now it's time to reverse that. Tonight, I am at Satchmo's Restaurant. And I cannot tell you how refreshing it is to get back out amongst a few friends, all socially distanced, obviously, and may, and just enjoying a good night. So I want to thank everybody and wish everybody nothing but the best of luck and God's, uh, God's blessings. Hey, everybody make wise decisions and make humble decisions on behalf of everybody in St. Louis County. The world is watching you along with us. Thank you so much and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
That brings us to the end of our agenda.
Thank you very much for the public comment.
Before we take the motion to adjourn.
Councilwoman Clancy, you are out of order. Thank you very much for those who have come forward today for the public comment. I appreciate those efforts. We are, at, at this particular point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Um, I would like to make a comment before we adjourn a meeting today.
Is there, is there, uh, this is a, an emotion to adjourn the meeting?
I would like to make a comment before we adjourn the meeting. While I acknowledge that the law put both the outgoing councilwoman and the new councilwoman in uncomfortable positions, it was still the law. We have to follow the law and not doing so, even when it's deemed unfair, sets a dangerous precedent. I also, also recognize that there are fundamentally different interpretations to the law held by different council factions. I follow the legal advice provided by our county council, county counselor. Meanwhile, I've introduced a bill to fix our law so that this predicament never happens again. I continue to object at the, to the actions, um, and the votes and motions made at today's meeting. Um, I urge a peaceful and respectful resolution to this so that we can get on with county business and governance. My biggest priorities are those of my constituents. Vaccine distribution is at the top of the list, getting kids back to school and making sure everyone has a roof over their head. All of our residents deserve nothing less. I hope everyone has a nice holiday weekend.
Your objections have been noted. I need a motion to adjourn, please.
Councilman Harder read the motion. I seconded it.
If you have all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Thank you and have a good...
There's no legal meeting to adjourn.
Thank you.